I call this Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First thing tonight, I'd like to acknowledge that County Manager Jeff Hudson is unavailable to be with us tonight, and we have Deputy Manager David Cotton sitting in. We appreciate you filling in for Jeff. We'll begin with a prayer by our attorney and then followed with the pledge of allegiance by our deputy manager, Mr. Yarborough.
Please join me as I pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to gather together to conduct the business of your people. Lord, as we come here to deliberate on your matters, please give us the strength and the wisdom to do the right thing. Lord, we'd also ask you to protect our military and our family, a special blessing on them as they protect our freedoms and our rights. And please be with them, be they foreign or on these domestic shores. Now again, as we go into this meeting, give us a pure heart and an open mind so that we may do your will, for it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Let us stand and say the pledge with Mr. Cotton.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank you all for coming, and we have Ms. Becky Pollard, our Register of Deed with us, and Sheriff Miller. Good to have you both here tonight. If you have not turned your cellphones off, please do so. The board affords the public two opportunities to speak. The first opportunity, excuse me, the first opportunity is for three minutes in the beginning of the meeting, and at that time you must keep your comments to agenda-based items. Please sign up in the back of the room and identify the agenda item that you are speaking on. The second opportunity is a five-minute opportunity, and you can speak at the end of the meeting on any topic that the board has authority over. You'll be called forward in the order of which you signed up. We ask that you make all your comments to the board in its entirety. No audience participation is necessary, and please do not endorse a business or candidacy. The board reserves the right to respond to your comments at Commissioner's comments. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Second? All in favor, say aye. We have the consent agenda. If everyone's looked at the consent agenda, I'll take a motion to adopt the consent agenda. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Okay. This brings us to our first public comment. Mr. Cotton, has anyone signed up for the agenda-driven section of public comment?
No, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Would you present items four, five, and six to the board, please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Chairman Eichner, Vice Chairman Buchanan, Commissioners. The first public hearing tonight will be on the proposed 2016-2017 budget, and in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 159, Tac 12, Onslow County Board of Commissioners shall hold a public hearing on the proposed budget prior to its adoption. All required notices have been given. Madam Clerk, have we received any public input?
No, sir, we have not.
Citizens will be afforded an opportunity to address the board for no more than five minutes, per speaker, on the topic of the proposed 1617 budget. At this time, if it pleases the board, I will open the public hearing.
Please open the public hearing.
The public hearing is now open. No one has signed up in the back to speak on the proposed budget. I will make a call to the audience. If anyone in the audience would care to approach the podium, and please state your name and address to discuss the budget this evening. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I hereby close the public hearing, and now the matter is available to the Commissioners for discussion.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure as far as the 2016-17 fiscal budget? Got a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I've got two seconds. All in favor of adopting the 2016-2017 fiscal budget and the attached fees and schedules therein, say aye. Aye. Budget passes unanimously. Any nays? Okay, budget passes unanimously. Please move forward to the next public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The next public hearing is to consider the closing of an old country road, specifically Duck Creek Starling Road. It was previously a cut-through from Sand Ridge Road to what is now identified as NC 172. Before opening the public hearing, I would like to call on Mr. Ben Warren, our Planning and Development Director, to give a staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Mr. Timothy Carr submitted a petition to the county to close a portion of the old Duck Creek Starling Road. This road, as Mr. Cotton pointed out, used to be a cut-through from Sand Ridge Road to NC 172. It's been abandoned for a number of years now, and the property owners who formerly took access from this road or use this as a cut-through now take direct access from Sand Ridge Road or NC 172. At the May 2nd, 2016 regular meeting for the Board of Commissioners, the public hearing was established for this evening, and all of the notice requirements specified in the North Carolina General Statutes have been met. And so with that, this evening, we'd ask that the public hearing be held and that the board consider adopting the order to officially close the requested section of Duck Creek Starling Road. With that, I turn it over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Okay. Open the public hearing, please, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I will now open the public hearing. First, we will call for a statement from the applicant if they would like to approach the podium and make a statement. And please state your name, address, in relation to the applicant, please.
My name's Dewey Edwards. I'm the attorney for the petitioner, Timothy Carr. And as was mentioned by Mr. Warren, as best we can tell, the whole road, Old Duck Creek Starling Road, has been abandoned for over probably forty or fifty years. And as you can tell by, I think a copy of the exhibits that were attached to the petition show the actual location of the road, old road, as well as just the portion of the road that we're seeking to have abandoned, which is the portion that traverses Mr. Carr's property. And best I can tell, there's one property owner at the intersection of the old road with Sand Ridge that may use the old road for access to their property, but they're north of this property, so there's no use for the portion that we're seeking to have abandoned for anyone to use. And it hadn't been used, and according to Mr. Carr, there are trees that are probably twelve inches in diameter within the area that the old road's located. And his main purpose for wanting to have it abandoned is his intent to construct a major, a pretty large self-storage facility on the property, and a corner of the building that he's proposing to build is going to be over that area of the property. So for title insurance purposes and to make sure he's clear, he's requested me to assist him in having this portion of the road abandoned. Any questions? I'm glad to answer the best I can.
We'll call you back up, Mr. Edwards.
Okay.
At this time, I will make a call to the audience, as there was no one that has signed up in the back to speak. If anyone would like to speak on the petition to close a section of Duck Creek Starling Road, please approach the podium. As I see no one approaching the podium, I hereby close the public hearing and turn it back over to the Commissioners for discussion.
I have a motion and a second. Any board discussion, any questions for Mr. Edwards? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Move to general items.
Yes.
The first general item before you is the Public Safety Memorial nominee recommendation. There has been an additional, unfortunately, nominee for your consideration, and I will ask Mr. Norman Bryson to brief you on that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Recently, the Public Safety Nomination Committee has received an additional name to be considered placing on the Onslow County Public Safety Memorial. The Public Safety Nomination Committee met on June the 9th and has considered Law Enforcement Officer Deputy Stephen James Black from the Onslow County Sheriff's Office to be considered to be placed on the Public Safety Memorial. The members present voted unanimously to recommend him for the Public Safety Memorial, and they are respectfully requesting that the Board of County Commissioners consider formal acknowledging the recommended public safety personnel to be honored on the Public Safety Memorial.
What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. Norm, I know right now we're initiating the first plaque or engraving to be put in. In the future, is there going to be like one time during the year that you bring forth names, or are they going to be brought forth as a name occurs?
They should be brought forth one time a year. What they generally want to look at is around January of every year to go through and vet to see if any new nominations may come forward. The first series of nominations that we looked at were primarily they had been looked at because they were already recognized either at a state or federal level for being a line of duty death. Mr. Black's had not been originally, and it was brought forward a little bit later, and they looked at his to make sure he tried to get in with the initial onset of honorities.
Okay, good enough. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next two items are related. They are the Burton Park Industrial Development Fund Grant Agreement and potential general contractor, and I would call on Mr. Ben Warren to present those items.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cotton. Madam Chairman, the first item that we have for your consideration is a formal acceptance of the grant agreement from the Department of Commerce. In July of last year, the county applied or submitted a pre-application form for Industrial Development Fund Grant Assistant for roadway extension into the northern area of Burton Park, and the application was for approximately 2,438 feet of roadway, which also included water and sewer, three-phase power, and necessary stormwater improvements. In August of last year, the pre-application was formally approved by the Rural Infrastructure Board, and a grant award of $1.243 million was earmarked for Onslow County. In May of this year, the formal design plans for the project were submitted back to the state for review, and at the beginning of this month, those plans were formally approved, and the formal application was approved as well. And so the next step in the process would be for the Board of Commissioners to adopt or to sign the Rural Economic Development Grant Agreement with the state, and that would allow the state to release those funds for us to begin construction of the project. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Motion of the board?
Senator.
Okay. There's first and a second. Any questions about the grant? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously.
And the next item we have for your consideration is approval of the construction contract. The bids were, or excuse me, the plans were put out for bid proposals in May of this year, and we went through a couple of different rounds of bids and middles. The final round, we had two responsible bidders that submitted. We had Sunland Builders who submitted a bid in the amount of $1,679,781, and Morton Trucking Incorporated who submitted a bid of $1,565,588.48. So after evaluating the bids, staff recommends the contract be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Morton Trucking Incorporated, in the amount of $1,565,588.48. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Second? Second. Any questions? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is an interlocal agreement to study hardening structures in the New River Inlet. As you recall, during our June 13th budget workshop, the town of North Toppsil Beach approached us and requested a one-time $250,000 to match funds for a study, and that study specifically focused in on a terminal groin. During the Commissioners' discussions, you wanted to broaden that scope and look at all options available, everything from jetty to terminal groins to what else may be available to us. So staff prepared an interlocal agreement for your consideration, which would memorialize that and put that in writing, and the specific action requested is to consider the approval of the interlocal agreement, which would then be sent to the town for their ratification and consideration.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure? So moved. I have a second. I'll make the second. Discussion, questions?
I've got a question. I'm not, this interlocal agreement, this is not committing us to the $250,000 until we see what North Toppsil will say about the agreement?
Right, they would have to bring it back.
Yeah.
So it would come back to us, and then we would approve the $250,000 if the interlock agreement is, the specifications that we asked for?
No. For this agreement, no, sir, for this agreement to be effective, they would have to vote on it. You're voting on your end of it tonight, and then they would vote on their end of it at their next meeting. If they don't vote to approve it exactly as you have it drafted, then it's dead, unless it came back for some kind of negotiation. But I think they've asked us for something, as I understand it, they've asked us for something. We said, well, we will participate upon these conditions, and what we're doing tonight is laying out our conditions. So if they approve, so if you approve it tonight and present it, then it will be presented to them, and they'll either agree to the terms that you have, I won't say, included in the agreement, or there's no agreement whatsoever.
So any changes that they deem to make would make that?
If they made any changes to the agreement, if they changed the period in the agreement, it would have to come back to you, to the board.
And even if they approve it?
Adoption.
And even if they approve it in whole, it would still have to come back before this body in the form of a budget amendment, because the money has not been identified or specifically appropriated?
But you'll have a second bite of the apple to actually appropriate the money.
Because it will come out of tourism funds. It's not coming out of the general fund. It would be, but this is just to send them in writing what we would consider, and for them to send it back to us with specifics, so there's no misinterpretation of what the county is seeking or what they are seeking.
And you would still, again, at the appropriation phase, you would still have, you would still review it one more time, but it would be pretty much a done deal at that point.
Okay, I am in support of trying to do something to try to make a permanent fix for the inlet and try to help our commercial fishermen out. I'll do whatever I can to accommodate that, but I don't want to spend $250,000, and they come back and say, well, we need a terminal groin, and the terminal groin may or may not be what we need to fix it, but I'll, Madam Chair, I'll support it at this time.
And Commissioner Black, let me say this. You're not obligating yourself to do anything past funding the study and collaborating with them in developing those types of decisions. So you're not, and you're not obligating yourself to spend more than $250, period. So this is just to agree to enter into the study phase with them as equal partners in the development collaboration of a plan.
Madam Chair, from my understanding, when we had the meeting, basically, and you brought that forward, was that we just don't want to lock into a groin. We want you to look at additional options, and that's what we're agreeing in this, in a local agreement, that they'll have to change that language of what they came forward with to begin with.
Exactly. The concern of this board has always been navigation, and the only thing that this agreement is going to ensure is that we study whatever the most viable solution is, that we don't just eliminate all the potential and go with a terminal groin if, in fact, there are other solutions that would work better for navigation, then those are solutions that we want to hear. We do not want to just be focused in beach nourishment. We want to know what is going to solve navigation. So that's why we ask for it to be specified in writing, so there's no misinterpretation.
Well, that was a concern we had that day. My biggest concern is a terminal groin benefits North Toppsil Beach. It doesn't benefit the inlet.
Exactly.
And the inlet is what our concern is for the fishermen. So, and I go along with, what Jack says, I go along with this motion on it, but I'm like you, Barbara, and the rest of us, we want a permanent structure, because I brought it up in the meeting, that you go up north, if you go south Masonboro Inlet, there are hearts, hard actually, not groins, but actually jetties, and the jetty seem to work better, which now we were told it's five or six times more money than a groin. But the thing about it is, and you've heard me for years now, a Band-Aid doesn't work, and that's what I think is going to happen, and I'm like you, I'll vote to go along with it.
Okay, well, let me call the question then. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a final offer for real estate, and following that will be a offer to purchase, and I will call on Ms. Laura Jones, Purchasing Director, to walk us through that.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. On June 6th, the Board of Commissioners accepted an offer from a citizen to purchase parcel number 152059, and the current value of that property is $94,000. The offer was in the amount of $95,000. As required by statute, a public notice was advertised in the Daily News allowing other citizens to make an upset offer, and we did not receive any upset offers within that 10-day period. Therefore, the final offer is being brought back to you for final consideration in the amount of $95,000. If the board approves the offer, the property will be sold as is, and a deed will be prepared transferring the property, and then we'll remove it from the county asset file. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the offer in the amount of $95,000.
What's the board's pleasure?
No.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You have one more piece of property?
Yes, ma'am, I do. We actually received a new offer. The county received an offer from a citizen in the amount of $5,000 to purchase land located on Toppsil Road and North Toppsil Beach. It's referred to as parcel number 036346, and it has a current tax value of $5,000. We acquired this property through a foreclosure back in 1998, and the property is about one tenth of an acre in size and consists of a dune area and a small area located behind the dunes. The county's standard practice has been to sell surplus property using the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process, and this process allows for other interested parties to submit offers on the property after it's been advertised. And once we go, just like we're doing now, once we go 10 full days without any upset bids, after it's been advertised, and the final high offer will come back to you for final consideration.
Okay, so this piece of property is just being advertised, it's not for the sale, I mean, it's not, we're not voting on the sale, we're voting to advertise it?
Correct.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
The next four agenda items are related to our senior services, and I will call on Ms. Christine Kennett to come forward. The first is the Home and Community Care Block Grant.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. The Home and Community Care Block Grant is received annually from the Area Agency on Aging. It provides funding for in-home adult daycare, transportation, and nutrition services. This year's total grant is $607,177, with a $67,464 local match, which is met with existing senior services operational budget appropriation. And I'm ready to answer any questions you have.
Okay, what's the board's?
Accept the grant.
Second, to accept the block grant? Second. Any questions for Chris? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item is a senior transportation contract.
This is a contract that we have annually without Onslow County and Onslow United Transportation System. They facilitate services to elderly clients aged 60 and over. They're assessed annually for eligibility based on Division of Aging guidelines, and they provide handicap-available transportation and medical appointments and senior nutrition sites around the county. Services are all reimbursable under Home and Community Care Block Grant, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Accept the contract.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the Senior Nutrition Catering Contract.
This contract is between Onslow County and Diamond Food Enterprises, Incorporated. They deliver food for home-delivered meals to seniors and meals for all five nutrition sites. Nutrition services are provided to clients 60 and over, and they're assessed annually based on eligibility from Division of Aging. The service is fully reimbursed through Home and Community Care Block Grant, and I can answer any questions you may have.
What's the board's feeling about the meal?
Approved.
Second?
Any questions? I just want to point one thing out. Chris, I know years ago, seems to me like we were paying about $3 and something a meal. I know inflation, and this is a different provider. Is that, is that the best, I'm sure it is, the best price we could get?
Actually, that's about 45 cents more, I mean, less than we were paying the previous contractor when we bid it out again. This individual was the lowest.
Well, everything's gone up, so why should that be any different?
It's gone down.
Well, because we changed providers.
Okay, so all in favor of Diamond, the contract with Diamond, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. The next is Home Health and Hospice Occupational Therapy Contract.
This contract is between Occupational Therapy by the Sea and Onslow County, and the therapy services that they provide are essential to the operation of our home health and hospice. They generate revenue, and the funds are reimbursed through Medicaid, Medicare, and private insurance. What's the board's pleasure?
Accept the contract.
Second? Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Next.
Okay, and the last one for Ms. Kennett will be Home Health and Hospice Physical Therapy Contract.
This is a contract between Cornerstone Physical Therapy LLC and Onslow County, and the therapy services generate revenue that are essential to the operation of the agency, home health, and hospice. Funds are reimbursable, again, through Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay.
Accept the contract.
The second on, any questions? All in favor of approving the contract, say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The next two items, Ms. Heidi Bauer, our Senior Services Director, well, I'm sorry, Social Services Director, will be handling for us. First one is New River Lease. Ms. Bauer?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. This is a request to lease a site at New River Shopping Center. The lease is for suite number 455, located at 1249 Hargit Street. This is a facility that houses, hosts the agency director, the legal department, and child protective services. The facility consists of $13,049 square. The facility consists of $13,049 square feet at a rate of $13.19 per square foot, 12 equal monthly installments totaling $172,116.31 annually.
通過
I'll second, but I have some questions.
Yeah, okay.
My question is that this runs out to June 30th of 2017. We're going to be in a new building sometime in the spring. What does that do to that contract? Can we give notice to get out of it, or what happens?
So my understanding is when we get into the new building in the spring, there's a chance that the Department of Social Services won't be able to move in right away because of the next version of the project, which provides for the parking, that there will be a parking problem. So my understanding has been we would be in that building.
So we're anticipating, even though the new building will be completed, that we will fulfill the full year of contract at this location?
That's my understanding. Yes, ma'am.
That's the contract, that's the lease.
Okay. All in favor of the contract, say aye.
Aye.
No.
And one opposed, four to one? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the United Transit System.
The department has a contract with the United Transit Systems outs to provide transportation for the Department of Social Services clients to inform medical appointments. This service is available to eligible Medicaid clients that meet strict guidelines. The agency is required, per state policy, to utilize the most cost-efficient means of transportation. The United Transit System is that, that means, this is a situation where the Department of Social Services pays for the services upfront, claims their reimbursement, and reimbursement comes to us 100%. The federal share is 65%, the state share is 35%, and there is no county match for this service.
Okay.
通过
Have a second to approve the contract with Onslow United Transit?
Just a re, from last year, it's a thing, every year, just something we renew, over and over.
Well, each time we redo the budget, we have to renew these contracts.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Bauer?
Okay, the next contract is with United, Onslow United Transit System. This particular contract is to provide transportation services for clients that are eligible for Work First programs. They are available to provide transportation for medical appointments, employment, training opportunities, other community facilities, and resources necessary to help folks go to work. This is a mandated program. The money to provide this is 100% county funds.
通过
Second?
Second.
All in favor of the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. The next item on the agenda is appointments, and the only board that is up for consideration is the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. Of course, as you know, the ABC Board is comprised of five board members appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, and they are appointed to serve the ABC Board for terms of three years and can serve for three consecutive terms. They do employ a full-time system administrator who oversees the daily operations, and the Onslow County ABC Board provides oversight related to the operations of the six ABC stores within Onslow County. Dr. Beth Barton and Ms. Carol McIntyre's terms will expire on June 30th, 2016. Dr. Barton has served three consecutive three-year terms and is ineligible to continue serving on the board. Ms. McIntyre has expressed a willingness to continue serving on this board. Additionally, staff have received applications from Mr. Gary Dixon and Ms. Cynthia Wan. Both have expressed an interest in serving on this board and have provided a citizen participation application for consideration. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The vacancies have been advertised, the applications are on file, and have been certified by the clerk's office, and ballots have been provided for the commissioner's convenience. So the specific action requested is that you consider appointing the two, and I will take up the ballots.
Okay. While the deputy manager is tallying the votes, I would like to explain that we use ballots when there are more candidates than positions available. The ballots, however, are public information and can be viewed by contact and the clerk. All commissioners mark their ballots and sign their names to it. If anyone wishes to view the ballots, they may do so after the meeting.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, the board has selected Ms. Carol McIntyre and Ms. Cynthia Wan, and the county attorney has reminded me that you will also have to consider appointing a chairperson?
Yes, the ABC Board has notified us that they would prefer Ms. Carol McIntyre to be reappointed as chairman. Do I have a motion to appoint Carol McIntyre as chair?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of appointing Carol McIntyre, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Passes unanimously. We had nothing pulled off the consent agenda, so do we have anyone signed up for the five-minute public comment? Mr. Cotton?
Chairman, we do. We have Tim Coltrane and Roy Hall, 127 Messy Cove Lane, Sneed's Ferry, if that's correct. If Mr. Coltrane would approach the podium? If you gentlemen would please state your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. My name's Tim Coltrane. I reside at 127 Messy Cove Lane in Sneed's Ferry.
My name is Roy Hall. I reside at 109 Briarwood Court in Jacksonville, North Carolina.
Okay, let me ask, are you joint providing, or are you each individual topics?
We're jointly here together, ma'am.
Okay, go for it. You've got five minutes between the two of you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. As we stated, my name is Tim Coltrane. I'm the president of the Local Blue Knights, North Carolina, accepted Chapter VII. We're a law enforcement motorcycle organization. Mr. Hall here is the president of the Red Knights Motorcycle Organization. For years, we've been providing money to the county, which I've done an outstanding job on the fallen hero memorial. As some of y'all may know, over the past, last weekend, on July, June 11th, we had done our annual run again in memorial of Steve Bane and Gene Thomas, two of the heroes that were killed back in 2007, 2008. Questions have been brought to me concerning the funds that we provide, the donations, are they kept in a specific account by the county? Are they going to a general fund? Is it a interest-bearing? These are questions I could not answer. So I, these are the questions I come to see if I could get some answers to.
Okay, well, if you would like, as soon as you're finished with your presentation, we will answer those questions.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, those are the, that's the short of it.
Okay.
We have talked to Sheriff Hans Miller in reference to the, to these donations as well, which he, obviously, he don't, he couldn't give any answers, but one thing I would like to do is thank the board, and they answered one of my questions, who I talked to about nominations for fallen heroes, Mr. Norm Bryson, and we'd like to thank y'all for putting Mr. Black's name up there.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will answer your questions shortly.
Sure.
Okay. Any, any further?
No, ma'am, that was, those were the last people. Those were the only two signed up for.
Mr. Cotton, do you have some comments?
I?
I thought we'd do it at Commissioner comments.
Okay. If you like, I can answer at least one of those questions.
Okay, well, if we, you'd like to do it at manager comments, Mr. David McColl can probably assist you with that.
He'd actually be the, the better qualified to do that. I do know that the, the funds are segregated. I don't know the answer to the interest. And I have no further comments.
I'm sorry, what did you?
No more comments.
Oh, no more comments? So were we going to have more questions answered as far as the funding? The funding is kept in a separate line item in the county. It is, contributions are not mixed in the general fund. They are specified for the Public Safety Memorial, and those funds don't, don't get mixed in with the regular funds. So I hope that if, if we need more specifics, I'll be happy to talk with you after the meeting. Okay. Commissioner comments? Jack, what you got?
Well, I'm glad we got a budget that we got passed, and we don't have a tax increase in that budget, and thanks to the staff, we worked very hard and very diligently to whittle the budget down so it would be palatable. It's the first, first budget I've voted on in favor in my four-year term as a commissioner. So I was looking forward to doing that, and I did that tonight, and I'm tickled that that happened. There was a letter to the editor and also a letter or a statement in the Daily News from one of the town commissioners in Swansboro about the difference in the fire department that our, Norm Bryson had presented to us for us to cover a certain fire district in Swansboro. The misconception was that we could provide a fire service if we had to for the White Oak Fire District for $163,000, and we'd proposed to pay another agency $144,000 to do that. But anyway, I think the folks didn't realize when they were making that statement that it was $20,000 more, but it was still a lot more area that would be covered if the county did it. So probably it would be less, a lot cheaper. So Norm, I would say we probably need to get with the Swansboro officials and let them know what that entailed to do that $163,000 fire protection for that area, because it covers a lot more people than what they're covering. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Madam Chair?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those comments. Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And Jack, likewise, I agree with you in reference to the statements you've made as far as the budget and the staff and what they've put in the long, arduous hours that I know it took, and I'm grateful to our board that we were able to pass that so we can move forward with county business. And Madam Chair, that's all I have for this evening.
Well, thank you. Mr. Jarman?
Go ahead.
Okay. Vice Chair?
I want to thank the Sports Commission for the, what they did the other night in reference to the Hall of Fame. It was outstanding. It was probably one of the best sports commission functions that I've ever been to, and I've been going to them every year, and that one was outstanding. I want to thank them for that, and thank everybody for coming.
Yeah. Well, as you may have noticed, we completed a budget. I appreciate the commissioner's diligence in working through all the details. I especially appreciate staff. They made, they carried out the hard decisions that the board gave them, and budgets are very difficult to come by, but hopefully this one will be the hardest that's needed to be adopted in some time. If there's nothing further, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Yeah.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.